...of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual equity, justice, morale.
Amy, can you take roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mrs. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Tietzschort?
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura?
Here.
Okay, 3.1 Legislative Updates.
Thank you, Mark. In the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee, the committee accepted a substitute version and passed Senate Bill 229. The bill would do some of the following: would temporarily extend the deadline to April 30th, 2022, for a school district to submit a blended learning model to the Ohio Department of Education for the 21-22 school year; will also permit a school district to adopt a resolution that provides remote learning to a student whose parent requests remote learning; and require a district that operates an online learning school to allow a quarantined student in a traditional district school to participate in that online learning school during the period of quarantine. That's what I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, 3.2 Student Achievement Liaison Report.
Okay, lots of cool things going on with the kids at both Northwest and Colrain High Schools. We'll start out with Colrain High School Boys Soccer, first team, all GMC, Alex McAfee, Will Shuddy, and Eli Wilt. So congratulations to them. Second team, all GMC, is Tavion Hutcheson. Alex McAfee was also named Player of the Year in the GMC. Also named All-City and All-State, so great job. And Will Shuddy is also All-City. For the girls at Colrain High School Soccer, first team, all GMC, Josie Menking and Ava Scherz. Second team, all GMC, is Kalani Brodnix. Josie Menking was named All-City Girls Soccer. Girls Colrain Volleyball, first team, all GMC, Abby McNally and Kylie McNally. So congratulations to them. And second team, all GMC, is Rosie Beck. Kylie McNally was selected to District 16, third team. She will represent Colrain in the seniors showcase, so good luck to Kylie. Abby was selected to be in the District 16 All-Star Match. So exciting for both of them. Northwest High School Girls Soccer, we have Jenna Adletta, first team, Carly Siebel, second team, and Julia Dye, honorable mention. Great job. Northwest High School Boys Soccer Team, Seth Warren, first team, Michael Posey, second team, and Adam Rowland, honorable mention. Northwest High School Golf, Morgan Frank, second team, and Jamie Adams is honorable mention. And Northwest High School Boys Golf, Reed Shafer is second team, and David Shelley is honorable mention. Also Northwest High School Cross Country, Luke Chapin and Abigail Sears, both honorable mentions, so great job for them as well. Northwest High School Girls Tennis, Taylor Roberts, honorable mention, first in singles. And Northwest High School Volleyball, Janasia Bailey, second team, and Megan Carroll, honorable mention. So a lot of great job for a lot of kids and student athletes at both high schools, so wish them good luck for the ones that are playing, continuing to play, and congratulate all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Jim, are there any attack updates?
Not tonight.
Any employee organization reports?
Not tonight.
Okay. Community comments, there were none submitted. And that brings us to adoption of the superintendent consent items.
So tonight for the consent items, we have our normal personnel items, we do have a retirement, five resignations, three initial appointments, and two change in status. Also in that is a resolution. Several meetings ago, we passed a resolution to extend a hiring bonus to Transportation Department, bus drivers, van drivers, mechanics, and aides. And we have seen an uptick in the applications for those positions, and part of what you saw tonight were some bus driver and trainings that are coming in based on that. We have multiple open positions, about 30 district-wide, for food service, for building level assistance, for custodians. And that is creating a hardship on our buildings in terms of being able to logistically run the buildings and monitor all the places that they need to and support the students in their academic progress. So tonight we are putting a resolution on there that would extend the hiring bonus for all of our classified positions to try to increase the candidate pool so we can fill all those positions and alleviate some of the stress on the buildings in terms of trying to manage the interventions that they're trying to do right now. We also have vendor contracts, typical vendor contracts for title services, special ed services for non-pubs. We do have Hanover Research, who will facilitate some surveys for us so that we can really quantify some of our strategic plan around culture and climate with all of our employee groups and stakeholder groups. And then Hamlin County Expanding Opportunities contract, that is to support graduation pathways for high schools. We have donations to Pleasuron Middle School from Blackbaud, Diane Needlinger for PRE to support their PBIS incentives, Rumke to support Colrain High School Show Choir, and from Tracy Turney-Smith and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority donating books to our middle school and elementary libraries. Also on there is a resolution to declare students impractical to transport, which is something that normally happens this time of the year, once we look at routing, transportation, and specific students based on one of six criteria that are not eligible for transportation. With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion and second? Need discussion?
Just real quick, one of the names on there for resignation of extra duty contract, Tom Farmer, very, very, very longtime dedicated employee and graduate of Colrain High School. I know we had the opportunity on his last football game at Colrain Middle, a presentation, and I believe they named the field. Was it the field?
That day, Farmer Field.
Farmer Field, and known Tom for a long, long time, and just want to say he will be missed. Farmer family has definitely been a big part of Northwest local schools, so I'm wishing the best, and he's been retired from teaching, but he's still been around, so just want to thank him for everything and wish him the best of luck in the future.
Thank you, Pam. Consent items pass five to zero. That brings us to fiscal consent items.
Okay, so good evening. First, we have the regular meeting minutes from November 3rd. Our win announced certifications over $3,000, we have two. One is for a bus repair, and the other is for our annual enrollment software license that we have. Then we have, we've received two grants. One is our homeless grant that the federal government has extended through the ARP program for $80,000. And then we also received the annual network connectivity grant for $18,000. This helps offset our Wi-Fi and internet costs. And then finally, there's the resolution to submit a modified tax budget to the Hamlin County Budget Commission. So annually, we have to submit a tax budget every year in January, but because we operate on a fiscal year, the Ohio Revised Code allows us to do a modified budget, which is where we just submit all the funds, the three funds, general fund, forget service fund, and permanent improvement funds that collect taxes. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion and second, are there any discussions? Consent items pass five to zero. And that brings us to the five-year forecast assumptions.
So annually, in November, we do our five-year forecast presentation, and then in May, we do an update of how we ended the year for our five-year forecast. The things we want to keep in mind as we're looking at our five-year forecast is our district financial parameters and community partnership. And this is where we have agreed and have told the community that we will keep our expenses at no greater than 3% increase annually. That we have a cash balance reserve policy, which is a 60-day cash balance reserve on hand. And then our community, with the last levy of 7.5 mils that we passed in 2019, our community did ask that we come back for smaller, more frequent levy cycles than to have such a big, large levy. So those are things that we look at when we're looking at our five-year projections. The Ohio Fair School Funding Plan was passed this past July, and so the brown bar was our previous enrollment, and then the green bar is how enrollment is currently calculated. So it shows in history what our enrollment was compared to what our enrollment would have been had it been under the calculation that the Fair School Funding Plan calculates. So in 19, we opened our three new elementary buildings, and as you see, our enrollment did pop up a little bit. And then in fiscal year 20, we had a large apartment complex closed down for renovations, and we lost enrollment. And then in fiscal '21, that was the year of COVID, so we also had a reduction in our enrollment at that time, too. The new funding plan now funds students where they are educated versus where they reside. So what this does is it reduces our revenue by $4 million, but it also reduces our expenditures by $6 million. So we'll have a net of $2 million that we can keep here at the district. But what this also does is it makes us look richer to the state in their state funding formula. When you have reduction in your student enrollment, you become a richer district. So instead, in 19, our state local share, the local was 60%, the state share was 40%. By the end of our five-year forecast in fiscal '26, we're projected to be a 78-22% split. So we're going from 60% to 78% local share. Another way this is shown in the new funding formula is we used to receive around $29 to $30 million from the state, and we're going to about $27 million. The state has guaranteed us at the reduced fiscal year '21 level, which is a reduction from fiscal year 19 to begin with. They've also restricted more of the revenue that we've received from the state. So we used to get about $2.7 million in restricted funds from the state, and that is going up to $4.3 million. It is not an overall increase in funding, but they're restricting more of the funding that they currently send our way. And then to recap on where we've been, we did have our renewal in 2017, about a $5 mil levy. In 2019, we did have our significant 7.5 mil levy that our community supported us with. And projected in the forecast is an emergency levy in 2024, about a $5 mil levy, because our operating deficits, and as I'll get into that, will start in 2024. So school funding is more like a bowtie effect. Revenue is flat when passed, so expenditures over time will start to exceed revenue, and then as you pass levies, your revenue goes up, and then your expenditures will then soon will start to exceed revenues again. So in 2019 was when our revenues were lowest, and our expenditures were exceeding our revenue, and that's when we asked for our last levy. And as you can see, that does take time to come in, and by 2021, we were at full funded from that levy. Expenditures were lower than the levy, but over time, as the blue line stays flat, the brown, orange line does start to increase over time as expenditures and inflation starts increasing over the years. Another way to look at this is the proposed levy towards the top, the first year of levy, because we're on a fiscal year and taxes are collected on a calendar year, we would only receive half of the levy the first year, so about $4.8 million, and this is projected on a $5 mil levy. And then after that, you receive full funding for the levy. But as you come down below, without a levy, we start into deficit spending in 2024. And even in 2024, with the passage of a levy and our deficit spending are almost awash. But then in 2025 and 2026, the revenue exceeds the expenditures, and then, like the bowtie effect, the expenditure will start exceeding the revenue, and then you start spending into the amount that you've received in advance, and then you have that levy cycle where you have to ask again. If we did not pass a levy, we would have to cut our services and operations of the district about 8% in 2026 in order to not have that operating deficit. And this is just another way to look at revenues and expenditures. So revenue is green and expenditures are blue. And in 2021, we had just passed that levy in November of 19, so our revenue is higher than our expenses. And over time, as you can see, the revenue stays flat, but the expenditures start to increase. And then in 2024, that dark blue bar is the half of a new levy. In 2025, you get the full new levy revenue. And over time, from 2024, 25, 26, you can see the expenditures start to increase again and start getting close to or exceeding revenues. So the three things we talked about at the beginning that we look for is our community partnership, and that we promised our community that we would stay within that 3% growth, and so we might have to adjust our operations and services that we provide in order to stay within that. In 2020, we did close down in March, so that reduced our expenditures for the year. In 2021, we were not only remote in cohorts and had shifted some of our operations, but we also reduced our operations 2.6 million. That was part of our promise to our community. For passing that levy in November of 19, that we would reduce our operations the following year by $2.6 million. So between being a year of COVID, having a difference in operations, and also reducing our expenditures 2.6 million, 2021 was a lower operation year. 2022 has that $6 million of students educated elsewhere, where we're no longer paying that out, so that's not reflected in that number. So we're able to keep our costs pretty flat, but once we get out to 2024, we have some positions that we're currently funding through ESAR that we'll have to shift back into general funds. These are general fund positions prior to, and we've been able to utilize the ESAR funds to pay for those positions for two years, and then they'll come back. And so that one does have a bump of 5%. And then in years '25 and '26, we actually reduced some of our supplies and services in order to stay within the 3% in those years. So those prior, those outer three years, we will have to continually look at, monitor where our revenue is and where our operations are, and possibly have to reduce some of our services in order to stay within the 3% partnership. The cash balance policy. We stay within the cash balance policy for the first three years, but as we just discussed, we start deficit spending in 2024, which then starts eating into the carryover, and we dip down below our cash balance policy of 60 days within fiscal '25 and '26. And while you could still say, well, '26 still has $16 million. Just last year, because of COVID, the county extended tax collections by two months. That's $25 million that we did not receive two months later. That $16 million would not have carried us through those two months, and we would have to borrow funds in order to make payroll into our operations. And then our community has asked that we come back with smaller, more frequent levy cycles so that they are able to support us. And the current forecast has a $5 mil projected levy, and that levy, based on projections, should last five years. The last levy, when we passed, asked the community to pass it, and passed it, we promised them it would last for three years, and with this forecast, we're able to get it out, stretch it out to four years. Do you have questions?
I'd just hope the mistake doesn't throw anything at us between now. There's no need to do that.
Absolutely.
Did you say it was 8% cuts that we'd have to make if the levy doesn't pass?
It would be an 8% reduction.
Is that as bad as it was when, what year was it, when we had to make the major cuts?
2021. Early 2021.
No, we cut 2.6 million. This would be 8 million, 8 point, was it 8.8?
So last levy you asked for 7.5 mils?
No, that's milage, that's milage, not million.
If you had to use your crystal ball, what kind of?
8.4.
8.4?
I was interested.
No, I'm sorry. I'm just asking, what kind of, what would you say the mil levy will they be asking for in 2024?
So projected in the forecast, based on our current operations and the projected deficit spending, is a $5 mil levy, which would generate $9.6 million annually. Without it, we would have to cut 8.5 million in services by 2026. And remember, expenditures continue to compound, so every year, we would have to be making reductions without increasing revenue.
Thank you.
So last meeting, we spoke about the facility master plan, about moving forward with two middle schools. Is there any variable in that project that would impact this one way or the other?
Yes. So a building project is selling bonds and a bond levy. It's not an operating levy, so it would be two different levies. But if we did not have a bond levy, we do have $47 million in deferred maintenance. So if we were not able to pass bond levy and bonds to go ahead and build and renovate our current facilities, we would have to go out and borrow funds for the $47 million in current, immediate needs, and then that would need to be paid out of general fund, which would mean we would have to make reductions to our current operations in order to make those debt payments.
Any other discussions, questions? I need a motion and a second to accept the five-year forecast assumptions.
Still moved?
Second.
And that passes five to zero.
And next is an update of our resolution of district financial parameters and community partnership. This is to extend our commitment. Right now, our partnership for the 3% growth goes through fiscal year '23, which is next year. This would extend our commitment through fiscal year '26, which is the five-year forecast. It keeps us at 3% except for fiscal '24, which we may end up up to 5, depending on how we can work those operations and bringing those positions back in. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the district financial parameters and community partnership.
Still moved?
Second.
That passes five to zero. Thank you, Amy. Daryl, your updates?
I just have two quick things. One is just a shout-out to all of our buildings and the staff there who are going above and beyond to cover all these open positions that we have, and an appreciation to the Board for being creative and being willing to go and think outside of the box to try to help solve these problems so that our buildings can operate more efficiently. So thank you to the Board for doing that, and to the buildings for everything they do to maintain the instructional integrity of what we're doing for kids. And then the second thing is just a shout-out to Amy and her entire team. The forecast is a humongous undertaking, and her entire team rallies around getting that done. It is a complex puzzle, and it is always changing, as Pam mentioned, with all of the curveballs that we get. And so I just want to shout out Amy for all the work she did and the ability to explain something extremely complex in a way that we understand the needs, the complexity, and the direction that we're going. So that's a huge undertaking.
Daryl, I asked you earlier, I think yesterday maybe, are there any other school districts that are offering some type of sign-on bonus?
Not currently in terms of a monetary bonus for a sign-on. Hopefully, we're going to continue to use that leverage to get more people to apply to the district. It did work for transportation, so we're really hopeful that we'll continue to get higher quantity as well as quality candidate pull for our open positions.
Right. Good.
Daryl, could you just give us a brief update on the current status of transportation?
Yeah, so currently, we have multiple driver and trainings. We have a couple of new drivers who are working through the HR process. We are still canceling six routes. The Transportation Department has been able to kind of collapse at least one route, and they're looking at some others. So we're hoping that as we have additional routes that are consolidated based on low ridership, and some of these new employees coming on and picking up routes, that we'll be able to alleviate some of that pressure and cancel less routes in the future, to the point where, like we said, this is a short-term solution, and we don't expect to be canceling routes permanently for the rest of the year. So we hope that there will be some alleviation to that in the near future.
And that's just not our district. It's happening everywhere.
It is.
You know, with all the districts canceling routes for a week or two at a time and stuff like that, so.
We just hope ours is a short-term solution, and we can get to the other side of this and then start working on our long-term solution.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other discussion, questions for Daryl? That brings us to board comments. Joe?
Just one comment. Two Fridays ago, I was warm and very healthy watching the Colrain football team against Elder. And I will tell you this right now, I wish to congratulate that football team. Elder had to take them 300 times to beat us, and our kids left everything on that field. So congratulations to the coaches and players.
Jim?
No comments tonight.
Pam?
Just a couple things. I want to echo what Daryl said about the five-year forecast. It's a very confusing topic, and it's definitely an ongoing, ever-changing. The one thing that really concerns me, and I wish we could get our community to start writing letters, is the fact that we're going to go to a 78-22% split, and that they consider this district a rich district. It's just so frustrating how they manipulate the numbers and change everything around where you might get a little bit extra here, but boy, they're going to make sure they take it away somewhere else. And there's no way you can tell me that our district doesn't deserve more than 22% money from the state. Also want to thank the donors. We, you know, several donations, and it just makes a huge difference. So how big or how little, does it matter, but the fact that we continue to have companies and individuals that donate to our schools, we just truly, truly appreciate it. And the only other thing, we're talking about shortages. Had the opportunity last week, actually, was in Florida, and in the Keys. There we are, in a little teeny town, big whole banner as we drive by the school, and they're advertising for food services, transportation. They're having the same amount of trouble, and they have palm trees down there and really nice weather. So hopefully, everybody can be patient. I know this district continues to work on unique ways to deal with the situations of the shortages, and kudos for us being the only district to be offering sign-in bonuses, because we've got to do something, and hopefully, this will turn around very soon. That's all.
Thanks, Pam. Pam?
Just like to take the opportunity, here we are November 15th, we're 10 days away, to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Good. I just want to say, Amy, thank you for the five-year forecast. I think, I'm excited in the fact that we're looking at facility restructures, because I think we just can't keep doing the same book of business, because the state is never going to adjust our revenue. And we're going to have to change how we conduct business, or it's just going to be the dog chasing his tail from now until it finally catches his tail. I don't even want to think about what that means. Want to remind everybody, the wisdom... Want to remind everybody, the Wizard of Oz starts at Colrain High School, I believe, this week. Excuse me. I want to congratulate the student athletes again in the midst of all the craziness and all the, our kids are still doing their fun kid activities and being obviously very, very successful at it. And then lastly, I just want to say, you know, in the midst of, you know, I hear a lot of teachers talk about just the load and stress that they're under, I'm encouraging everybody to really enjoy Thanksgiving. Unplug, enjoy your families, and rejuvenate while you've got a few days off. And that's all. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Great, thank you. That passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening.